I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Good morning and welcome to the August 18th County Commission Meeting. I'd remind you to silence your cell phones. Meeting documents are on the end of the counter next to Commissioner Bender. Robert has listening devices if you need assistance with that in the front row here. And with that, we'll go on to our routine business. Item number one is consider a motion to approve the agenda.
Turn.
Is there a motion?
Second.
A motion and a second. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, same sign, motion passes unanimously. Item number two is approve the county commission meetings from August 11th, 2015. Is there a motion?
Some of.
Second.
A motion and a second. Any corrections? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, same sign, motion passes unanimously. Item number three is bills to be paid in the amount of $907,667.32. Is there a motion?
Pay the bills.
Second.
Motion and a second. Any comments? No comments? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, same sign, motion passes unanimously. Item number four is reports. Item A is the Minnehaha County Sheriff's Department report for July 2015. Item B is the auditor's accounting for the county treasurer as of July 31st, 2015, and those are both on file at the auditor's office. Item number five is personnel actions. Item A, consider a motion to approve routine personnel actions. Is there a motion?
I'm going to grab a motion.
Motion and a second. Any comments or questions? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, same sign, motion passes unanimously. Item number B is special commission action to convert one deputy sheriff position pay grade 16 in the sheriff's office to a deputy sheriff sergeant pay grade 20 effective 9/5/15. Michelle Boyd.
Good morning. Michelle Boyd with the sheriff's office. As you know, in the 2016 budget, we had made a request to reclassify one patrol position, a deputy sheriff, to a deputy sheriff sergeant in order to provide better coverage over the weekends. We have realized it would be very beneficial to us if we could do that effective September 5th of this year rather than wait until January. It's gonna cost approximately $1,900 through the end of the year. We have the money in our 15 budget, so we would not need a supplement for that. But we currently have four officers that are in training, three are out in peer, one is in field training, but being down, those officers is putting a little bit of stress on some of our shifts. So we feel that being able to provide that supervision, especially over the weekends, would be very helpful. So we're asking that you would approve that in September 5th rather than January 1st.
Okay. Any questions for Michelle? Is there a motion?
I'm going to grab a motion.
Is there a second?
Second.
I have a motion and a second to approve. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, same sign, motion passes unanimously. Item number C is a special commission action to immediately convert four sergeant positions pay grade 20 in the jail to four corporal positions pay grade 16. Michelle.
Periodically, we take a look at our staffing, and in the jail, as you know, we have a couple different levels of supervision, that being corporals and sergeants that provide our shift coverage. For a while now, we have been finding that it's very beneficial to have one sergeant assigned to each shift. It provides better consistency for the shift, for one supervisor to run it, and then the corporals to take. One would be in charge of the jail, one would be in charge of intake. And by doing so, we are able to save about $40,000 in our operating costs, but also manage the shift in a more appropriate manner and makes it a little bit easier to know who your direct line supervisor is. So we're asking to make that change. We've been operating that way for a few months now, and we find that it operates very well, so we would like to permanently make that change. It's just a change in the auditor's office as far as our authorization.
Okay. Any questions for Michelle? Is there a motion?
Make a motion to approve.
Is there a second?
Second.
A motion and a second. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, same sign, motion passes unanimously.
Thank you.
Thank you. Item number six is applications for abatement. There are none. Item number seven is notices and requests. Item A is the East Dakota River Development Notice of Meeting at 10:00 a.m. Thursday, August 20th, 2015, at the EDWWD office at 132B Airport Avenue, Brookings, South Dakota. Item number eight is planning and zoning notices. There are none. Item number nine is petition for compromise of lien. Jeff Barth.
Thank you, Madam Chair. There are three liens involved, but only one applicant. DPNO 68867 for $874.40. DPNO 42062 for $668.50. And finally, 42064 for $1,118. The applicant's spouse came to the office requesting a compromise in full of one of these liens in the amount of $874.40. And when looking into it, they found these other liens also were on their names between the two of them. After learning of the additional liens, the applicant amended their compromise request to compromising in full for a payment of $400. The liens include public defender, public advocate, part relief provided between 1999 and July of 2015. Partial payments have been made on all liens, and we always like that. Total assistance on the liens was $3,828.08, of which 38% or $1,455 have been repaid. If they were to make an additional $400 payment, the applicants will have repaid 48% of all the assistance provided. The applicant hopes to purchase a home sometime in the next two years and need to take care of these liens. They have been in contact with a lender who advised them that they may qualify. A year from now, both are employed full-time and have four children. Their 2014 tax return less than income of $47,054 with a refund of $6,610. They have $1,800 in savings, two vehicles, one of which operates, and they have a debt to Sioux Falls Federal Credit Union. So the applicant is present, and before I would make a motion, I'd invite him to speak. And as you know, Madam Chair, he can speak from where he is without identifying himself and just see if he has anything to say.
Yep. So if you want to say anything, you don't have to stand up, and you just talk real loud, if you would, please.
Good morning. My name is Jacob. My wife and I are requesting, I kind of didn't know about the other liens or we phased it out. I wanted to raise, when I learned of those, I wanted to raise it up to $1,000 to kind of about more than 50% if they're going to be paid for everyone. I understand we've made mistakes over the years, and I'm taking steps to remedy them. We no longer receive financial aid of any kind. We're working to be productive citizens. We have four kids in school, and both, my wife and I, work full-time, and so keeping the budgets proven difficult, but we're learning better strategies including that. The last few years, we've been working to build our credit with the goal of purchasing a home within a year or two. Like Jeff said, these bills or liens are one of the last obstacles in our path, and what we want to, we understand they are ours. We're just hoping that we have considered approving that compromise, helping us on our path. Thank you.
Okay. Thank you. Are there any questions for the applicant? Is there a motion? The applicant has offered $1,000.
That was my only question I wanted to clarify. I think with the offer of $1,000 that that is a very good faith effort towards repaying that and being responsible for the debts they've incurred, and I'd make a motion to approve.
Okay.
Commissioner Bender is right. I'll second that motion.
I have a motion and a second to approve $1,000 compromise of lien. You do have a year to pay that off. I would like to commend you on working hard to pay him back and actually coming forward and trying to settle debts with us. Are there any other questions or comments? I have a motion and a second to accept the compromise of lien for $1,000. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed?
Aye.
Motion passes three to one. And Robert can help you with any information that you need to finish that out, so thank you. The next item is opportunity for public comment. If anyone would like to speak about anything that's not on the agenda, we'll give you about five minutes maximum. And is there anyone? Just items that are not on the agenda, and if you would give your name and your address.
Okay. Good morning, Commissioners. My name is Brett Healy. I live in Chamberlain, South Dakota. Rural Chamberlain, that is. I'm a pro bono consultant for the Voting Rights Organization Four Directions, Inc. I believe Commissioner Barth has provided to you a letter that O.J. Simmons, the executive director of Four Directions, had sent to the South Dakota Public Assurance Alliance on Sunday responding to the Argus Leader story that was in the Sunday paper relative to the Jackson County voting rights litigation. Two years ago, both O.J. and I came before the Minnehaha County Commission to point out some of the things were going on relative to Indian country and the South Dakota Public Assurance Alliance. At that time, at that time, they were going after Ogalala tribal members for court costs in a voting rights case revolving around the provision of a satellite in-person absentee voting site on the Pine Ridge Indian Reservation in now Ogalala, Okota County, then Shannon County. We thought that was inappropriate, frankly immoral at that time, and just pointing out to the Minnehaha County Commission as one of the biggest taxpayers into the South Dakota Public Assurance Alliance that perhaps those funds weren't being used wisely. Similarly, another part of the Pine Ridge Indian Reservation, the south half of Jackson County, used to be the old Washabaugh County until those counties merged in 1983, wholly on the Pine Ridge Indian Reservation. And the push was for satellite voting in-person office in the community of Wambalee, which is about 97% Native American, is actually the biggest community in Jackson County, so the provision of an equal opportunity for Native American citizens to vote on the reservation as opposed to the county seat of Kadoka. That effort, if you will, was turned down by the Jackson County Commission and the auditor. There was litigation that commenced. Our concern, frankly, is with taxpayer resources being wasted. I'm actually a taxpayer in two counties in South Dakota, Bruel and Brown, in which we own property, both of which are members of the South Dakota Public Assurance Alliance. And what has happened is that it's very clear from the judge's May 1st order and from a Department of Justice Statement of Interest brief earlier in 2015 that Jackson County simply isn't going to win this voting rights case. But more importantly, we have worked with the Help America Vote Act Task Force that was set up by then-Secretary of State Jason Gant in the fall of 2013 and winter of 2014 to establish and make sure that federal resources could be used to pay for these satellite voting offices. That has happened, and working with another Minnehaha County resident, now statewide office holder Chantel Krebs, who's the Secretary of State, that process has played all the way out. There is federal money available for Jackson County to open the satellite office in Wambalee, so it won't be even a burden at all to the Jackson County budget. And further, the one last thing that happened here just a few weeks ago is the Election Assistance Commission has provided legal guidance that these HAVA funds, or rather Help America Vote Act funds, can and most appropriately allocable, reasonable, and allowable to be used for these satellite offices. As you may know, in South Dakota, race relations still have a tinge of tension, more so perhaps in the western part of the state than the east river. But nonetheless, we all participate, over 400 municipal and county governments are a member of that South Dakota Public Assurance Alliance. Folks, these voting rights cases can get very, very expensive. It's time simply for the South Dakota Public Assurance Alliance to exercise some prudent risk management and frankly strongly encourage Jackson County to quit this fool's errand of thinking that they are going to beat the legal rap here of not providing equality for their citizens that live on the reservation. And it is, as I said, a taxpayer waste of money. I have had conversations yesterday with one of the members of the board. That will remain confidential, as I promised that director that I would, but did have on the record an open discussion with Judy Payne, the executive director of the South Dakota Public Assurance Alliance, to point out, and again, from a risk management standpoint, it's senseless, in our view, to protect Jackson County from spending $0 of their county taxpayers' budget to have the rest of the taxpayers that are members of that pool spend hundreds of thousands of dollars defending a voting rights case that they most certainly will lose. It comes down to putting a governor, if you will, on the spending going to one law firm in Rapid City who makes a lot of money defending these voting rights suits, but with all of the flashing red signs that the judge has tossed out their motion to dismiss, that the Statement of Interest brief from the Department of Justice Civil Rights Section, and the fact that this same law firm was forced to have their clients in a similar Montana case settle, and frankly, two years ago, that they got rid of another voting rights case in South Dakota by agreeing to provide the satellite voting office in Pine Ridge, again using Help America Vote Act funds to do so. We view it, again, as an affront on native voting rights first and foremost, but secondly, for taxpayers in South Dakota, a very foolish expenditure of dollars that is much better spent. We encourage you to at least reach out to the South Dakota Public Assurance Alliance and ask what their risk management strategy is relative to this case. And just so you know, these fully litigated voting rights cases, if they were to take this all the way to a sure defeat in front of the federal district court judge and elevate it to the Eighth Circuit on appeal and most certainly lose there as well, these things cost multi-million dollars when it's all said and done. And when they lose, the South Dakota Public Assurance Alliance and your taxpayers and taxpayers in Bruel and Brown County will be writing the check for that loss. And with that, if you have any questions, be happy to answer them. Thank you for the time to be able to bring this to your attention.
Okay. Thank you, Brett.
Madam Chair, I'd like to comment on Mr. Healy's comments. You know, our public assurance things works just like an insurance company. You know, I get insurance from State Farm. And while on the one hand, I might complain that why are you insuring that guy who's drinking and driving? In this case, we have somebody that's intentionally drinking and driving, intentionally running up these costs, and similarly to a indigent drunk driver in Minnehaha County who gets a public defender at no cost to himself, he may want to take it to the Supreme Court, but it's a waste of our taxpayers' money. You know, the satellite voting thing, they have one in Wall. Pennington County has a satellite voting location in Wall. Do you think it's there to help Native Americans vote? No. It's to help their citizens to vote. And that's what we're talking about here as well. Now, it may be that, you know, the 51% of Native Americans in Jackson County would like to maybe elect a commissioner or two, and it may be that the fact that they don't pay taxes based on being on the reservation upsets people, but they're American citizens just like us, and it really, the idea that this county is intentionally driving this racist anti-voting platform forward is very irritating to me, and the fact that Minnehaha County people have to pay their lawyers to fight it for, in the end, no good result, it makes me a little crabby.
Thank you, Chris Barth. Thank you.
Thank you.
Are there any other public comments? Okay. With that, we'll move on to regular business. Item number 10 is a public hearing to consider the request of the rezoning of number 15-05 to rezone from the A1 agricultural district to the C commercial district property. Legal description as tract 3 excluding H1 and excluding south 260 feet of the west 300 feet, Crell addition southeast 1 quarter, southeast 1 quarter, section 36, township 101, north range 51 west, Wall Lake Township. Kevin Hookman. Good morning, Kevin.
Hi. Kevin Hookman, County Planning Department. As you just heard, this is a rezoning request that is being brought before you. The property is located approximately three miles west of Sioux Falls and adjacent to the south of Wild Water West Amusement Park. The petitioner would like to rezone this property, about 20 acres. The property is about 20 acres. The petitioner would like to rezone approximately 18 of those acres into commercial, so it's currently zoned as agricultural. The south 260 feet and the west 300 feet will remain agricultural zoning district in order to maintain and building eligibility on the site. And the site is located along the highway, South Dakota Highway 17. There is a portion of the site that does meet up with it. However, the access will likely be off of a township road just to the south there. The Planning Commission voted to recommend denial of this rezoning with a vote of three for the denial motion and one against the denial motion. A couple nearby property owners spoke with concerns about the project at the Planning Commission meeting. These concerns range from traffic to drainage to the presence of people because of the proposal to have a reception hall. They were concerned about intoxicated people coming and going from the site. However, we are voting here today on the rezoning and not the land use as the actual zoning of the property. And I'll go over, here's the site plan that the petitioner has submitted showing the little area of that'll remain agricultural. So action should be taken to approve or deny, uphold or deny the Planning Commission's recommendation of denial of rezoning number 1505. So if you have any questions.
Kevin, what does the comprehensive plan say?
The comprehensive plan does state that we should put these sorts of requests into what is the rural service areas. There is a rural service area approximately a mile to the north of this location, and it's a small rural service area, so it'd be a quarter-mile rural service area. And it does also strongly discourage what be strip style development along highways where you have commercial development along the highway and then goes right to agricultural just from there. So you want to try to encourage clustering of commercial-type developments.
So this isn't a commercial area? Right now, this is strictly agricultural area, and this is not a commercial area?
Yes, and this is an agricultural area, and it's just outside of the transition area in the comprehensive plan as well. And you can see here the residential development just to the east as well. So it may be agricultural. It is agricultural that has developed over the years. Much of it was prior to the comprehensive planning, recent planning, so.
So any other questions for Kevin?
May I just point out that Wild Water West is zoned agriculture?
Any other questions for Kevin?
I have one, Kevin. Kevin, when the comprehensive plan was adopted, was pre-existing usages like Wild Water West, were they considered when you were determining what was commercial and transitional and agricultural?
Yes, they were considered. Some of these areas where there's pre-existing commercial uses were considered to be good areas to continue to grow. Others were considered to be, you can leave it there because it's a pre-existing use and just kind of let it be at that. Wild Water West has had several expansions, and they continue to kind of grow a little bit every year with new slides, new park expansions. So it is definitely a commercial use in the ag district, so.
Any other questions for Kevin? This is a public hearing, so the person who is a proponent may speak. Can you give your name and your address, please?
Good morning.
Good morning.
We live at 204 Park Drive in Lennox, South Dakota. As Kevin stated, we are requesting to rezone the property discussed and shown to commercial. Though the planning board recommended denial, we had expected this as the land is outside the comprehensive plan. Our plans are to build an event barn and rent out for family reunions, corporate meetings, weddings, or any purpose where the space will be needed. The picture shown, as you guys can see up there, this is a picture of what the facility will look like from the outside. As you can see, it'll be a very beautiful and elegant facility. We'll be adding driveways, parking areas, landscaping such as patios, trees, rock features, and large flower gardens. It is necessary for the success of our project to have adequate land amount to create a country view and enhance the overall atmosphere we are trying to achieve, yet located near the amenities that Sioux Falls provides, such as hotels, restaurants, and churches. Our proposed property is only one mile away from the current rural service area, and our plan is one that will only work beyond this rural service area. After surveying all the spaces outside the Sioux Falls city limits, it is our opinion that this is the best area for the business of this type, and there's no other better This picture shown is an example of what the interior of the building will look like. We believe that this space will be unique to Sioux Falls as it is designed with a country feel in mind, including all wood interiors with balconies, rustic lighting lofts, and a grand staircase with the amenities of a modern rental facility, including bathrooms and a small kitchen. Facilities like this one are all over the Midwest. Sioux Falls currently does not have a venue like this, though many people in the area are in search of one, and they end up going to nearby cities such as Rapid City, Omaha, and even Minneapolis. Or simply, they're using nearby barns of families and friends, which can be a safety hazard. We have spoken to many of the surrounding landowners, and we have heard many positive comments and neighbors' blessings, and we will be very sensitive to the neighbors to ensure that we will not affect the bedding land. We believe that this is the best use for this land and this project for many reasons. First, the area is already commercial activity, including Wild Water West adjoining the land, commercial storage sheds, office spaces, and a gas station. The land to the north side of Wild Water West is 109 acres. This is already zoned commercial. And we would be on the south side, where Wild Water West is in the middle, and that's 55 acres, and that is still ag. Second, the property is 1/16 of a mile off of Highway 17 on 268th Street. This will create really easy access for our guests. In addition, there is already a turning lane onto 268th, and we have been told that 268th has future plans of being paved. The current land use is ag, yet most of the 20 acres, or much of the 20 acres, is unfarmed due to the slope of the land and its tendency to gather water. And we have spoken to nine nearby neighbors, farmers, and landowners, and so far, the concern has been from two landowners worried about traffic. These neighbors have indicated that they like the plan and the use of the land, but they would rather see the entrance off of Highway 17. In our opinion, the space will create minimum traffic impacts as the events will be forecasted on weekends in the summer and very few winter events. Wedding's the largest expected event in the Sioux Falls area averages around 140 people. This adds a high number, 75 cars off the traffic level of Highway 17, which is 10% of the year. We have monitored traffic at all occasions and tee during a wedding and found that the traffic levels are not very heavy, and people come and go at different times throughout the evening, and most cars are gone by 10:30. Lastly, we will create economic development. This facility will be one of a kind for the area, and we estimate that we will get customers from 100 miles away using the facility, and they will shop, eat, stay, and play in Sioux Falls. In addition, we hope to create job opportunities and tax revenue for the community. In summary, my husband and I are involved and dedicated to the community, and we strongly believe that the proposed plan will enhance the community and provide a soft, sod-after venue for the families.
And I would give an opportunity for the opponents, people who are opposed to this, if anyone wants to speak. And there isn't anybody, so then I go to questions. Commissioner Kelly?
I have a question for the applicant.
You come back up.
I don't see a kitchen on the premises. Do you, are you gonna have a warming kitchen, or are you gonna prepare the food, or what?
No, we're not catering. Our, will strictly be, and we're not, we're actually, it's just gonna be a beer and wine license, so no hard liquor. The kitchen, we're not gonna use it as catering on the property, and caterers will come from the outside.
We have a warming kitchen for them, or some, okay.
Yep, yep.
What's your experience in this business?
So, my family actually has been in the hotel business for several years. My grandpa used to work, and my aunt is the general manager of the Sheraton. She will be helping us with this project. I'm also, I have a master's degree in business administration from the University of Sioux Falls, and I've been an assistant vice president at a bank for 10 years. So, in hospitality, I've been working in hospitality for pretty much my whole life, and from the time I was a small, small kid. We will start with rental of the facility, and we'll also do the bartending, and we'll be onsite at all, all the events. But other than that, all the other activities will come from the outside. There'll be caterers, wedding planners. So, ours mainly would be rental. My husband and I also own a construction company, and we have successfully for seven years now here in Sioux Falls, and it's very successful.
So, and your entrance is gonna be off 268th?
We, well, we are-
We'd like to get it off of Highway 17 that's gonna be determined upon DOT approval.
Would that be your preference? Yeah, but it'll be up to DOT whether or not you can get a curb cut there, is that?
Yes, if they'll allow an approach otherwise, it'll have to come off of 268th.
Have they expressed any concern with that, or?
He said, he said he didn't know, I'd have to turn in the application and go through the whole process.
Thank you.
Any other questions or comments? Okay. Is there a motion or discussion?
May I, Chair, you know, clearly, this is a little bit of an odd area right there, right next to Wild Water West, and, you know, if, if you were to compare this to some of the other facilities we have in agricultural areas, for example, let's say a winery, you know, they have events, large events, and yet there's in the agricultural area. I really don't see this as being that greatly different than the type of facility that should be next to a residential area, next to a Wild Water West. And, you know, the entrepreneurial attitude needs to be part of our culture in this county. And I, I think, you know, innovation, growth, it's going to happen, and I don't think this is against the characteristic of, characteristics of our county. And so, my, my tendency is to support this, and I did support it at the Planning Commission, but I'd like to hear from my fellow commissioners.
Commissioner Kelly?
Well, I think it's a great idea. Just, I'm a little biased, because 25 years ago, I would've done the same thing. I saw when I, a need for it even back in the early 90s, that this type of facility, we've got some around town, but as far as getting wedding dates and finding places for weddings, it's most difficult, it's worse now than it ever was. And the fact that the 109 acres north, does that take it all the way to the gas station?
Yes.
I believe so, yeah.
There's a gas station, a small, going to the south of that.
Okay, so, I mean, that whole corridor's, and you gotta call Wild Water West commercial even though, so I, I see absolutely no problem in this, and I'd have a motion unless somebody else has a comment.
I'll clarify, there's a section right here of-
We don't have a picture, Kevin. You can put it, give us a picture.
There's a section of Wild Water West right here that's zoned commercial. It's a small section, about four acres. And then there's, at the intersection, there's the gas station that is zoned commercial, and then on the northeast section, there's probably oh, 25 acres also, zoned commercial. And that's the extent of commercial zoning at this area.
What's the CA1 that's commercial agricultural, is there?
So, there's 100, so that small section of, of Wild Water West, when you have it in the system, it goes, it shows that it's commercial and agricultural. It doesn't, and is just listing that. It doesn't depict where that is unless you go through the imagery and find it. But it is only about, oh, five acres or so that was zoned. The rest of that 140 is still agriculturally zoned.
Thank you.
I'll just clarify that.
Kevin, what would be the concern of spot zoning?
I guess one of the major concerns of spot zoning in something like this is, is that you can get other growth that may not be developed, or may not be wanted. As a commercial operation here, if these guys have a good intention of having a reception hall, but if something happens that they aren't, there are a number of different other commercial type activities that can take in that spot that may be less desirable for the neighbors or less applicable, so that'd be the concern for spot zoning.
And there's no ability to do a conditional use for this type?
That is true, that they will need, they will also need a conditional use in most other uses. There's some retail uses that you can do, commercial, office type uses that you can just permit and build, but there's a lot of uses that do require a conditional use permit, that's true.
I wonder if Commissioner Kelly was asking, can we put a condition on the rezoning of this?
You can't put conditions on zoning.
Yep, can't.
But they will have to go through a conditional use pers, process, so they'll-
So, whoever put it on, they would have to anyway.
Yep.
Are there any other questions? I don't think so. Is there a motion?
I have a motion, and I'll have a motion to overrule Planning Commission and approve the rezoning.
A motion and a second. Are there any other comments?
Yes, I've kind of stated my, my comments. I do think, we have an obligation to, to make a proper blend through the county. This is an area that, even though it's, what, three or four miles away from the city, it's, it's coming in slowly, and, and I think, you know, Highway 17, I, I'm very hopeful that they can get the entrance off of 17, and that would satisfy those two homeowners, I think, down there, but I would encourage your vote yes on this.
I'm, I'm gonna support it. I didn't think coming into it I would support it, only because I like the fit of what it is. If it was a gas station, I don't think I would even consider it. And it's next to Wild Water West, and I think they've made a good argument, and nobody even opposed it. So, I'm a little surprised at that. So, I'm gonna support it, even though I still have a little concern about doing it just because it is spot zoning, and I don't necessarily agree with spot zoning at all. I do think it's probably a pretty good location for what they're particularly putting out there, so. That said, I have a motion, and a second on the table. Any other comments? All those in favor say aye. Aye. Those opposed, same sign, motion passes unanimously, so, next step. Item number 11 is a public hearing to consider application for special events on sale liquor license for farewell to Houston's concert, and that application has been withdrawn after publication of the public notice. So, we will go on to item number 12, which is consider a motion to approve the professional services agreement between Minnehaha County and Barry Dunn for development of a request for proposals, the RFP, for enterprise resource planning system. Monty Wattenbach.
Good morning, Commissioners. Monty Wattenbach with Minnehaha County IT Department. I have provided you with an agreement from the consultants Barry Dunn to guide Minnehaha County through a request for proposal process to help us select a new ERP system, which is really kind of part of our accounting, payroll, tax, land management, to name a few components for the county. I do feel that it is a good idea to work with a consultant such as Barry Dunn, specifically Barry Dunn, on this project due to, you know, the, the core, critical nature of this application. Now, this is not something that we're just going out and purchasing to use for the next, you know, couple of years. This is a very critical decision for our county, and it's the different software components that really run our county. It's not just a side little piece of software. This is critical stuff. It's critical that we do this in the, in the right way. And when we utilized Barry Dunn in the past for our needs assessment, planning, our needs assessment and action plan, I think everyone at the county that was involved with that project was very impressed with their level of understanding of those core accounting applications, and their understanding of just accounting in general. So, they were very good to work with. One of the documents that I did provide you with kind of talks about all the different things that they would do in that process, from facilitating vendor demonstrations to coming up with the list of requirements, working with the county to figure out what pieces that we've already developed that we would integrate, and what pieces we might have to work with the vendor to, to purchase from a vendor. So, a lot of different moving parts here. It's a very complex project, and like I said, I highly recommend utilizing them for this service. I will point out that the funds utilized for this will come out of the IT department's personnel savings. As, as you know, that requires your approval, so this is both asking you to sign this agreement with the understanding that it will be paid for with IT personnel savings span across both this year and next year. Currently have an open IT programmer position, and we utilize those salary savings to fund this RFP project. Questions?
Any questions for Monty on this? Commissioner Kelly?
Monty, I kind of liken this to building a small building when we get all done doing what we have to do. So, or like in the highway department, we have no, you know, we, we hire the engine, we hire people at the beginning, and then the middle, and then hire the, and then do the highway. So, I, I, am I right in thinking, I mean, this is kind of just part of the process of, of what's gonna be a project that'll be good for 30 to 50 years, probably, is that?
Yep, I agree. It is a part of the process in selecting the right, the right software vendor. As far as the timeframe, I, I hope it's, it's my career here at the county.
We do too.
You know, because there, there's a large investment. So, I, I like to think of large software projects as a minimum of 10 years. I would certainly think, and, and hope that it would be something longer than that. Our current software that, that has been kind of developed over the course of time has probably been in place 20 years, really. Most of our systems, you know, Core County, they've evolved over time, but a lot of those systems related to the tax software in Core County, although they've evolved, have really kind of been in place for a couple of decades, and, and just kind of at that, that crossroads now where we need to kind of evolve, and this is our next step, in my opinion. And we've had great support from, from the auditor's office and the commission office as well, so.
Any other questions for Monty? Is there a motion? And should the motion include to use personnel savings from IT?
It's up to you.
Okay.
I don't know if it can be understood, or if it has to be official.
Yeah, I, I think it has to be an official motion. Do we want to do that motion now? You don't think so?
To move the funds from personnel to operate?
It's not only moving funds, I think it's just authorizing approval to do so. I would think that this approval would, would also include-
Let's just, let's just put it in this one, so then it's just a done deal, if, if you make a motion.
I'll make the motion. How do you want it to speak?
Just to approve the professional services of Barry Dunn.
And move savings from personnel to-
From IT to pay for the costs.
Okay, that's my motion.
Okay. Motion and a second. Any other comments or questions? All those in favor say aye. Aye. Those opposed, same sign, motion passes unanimously. Thank you. Item number 13 is a briefing from the Minnehaha County Highway Department on the wheel tax.
DJ Booth, the Highway Superintendent. Today, I plan on giving you a short briefing on the county wheel tax. Approximately five months ago or so, the state legislature enacted a highway funding bill. It was a pretty big bill that you guys are all very well aware, aware of. Piece of that was an increase in county wheel tax, and there was a piece of it that increased 25% potentially if counties chose to go from the $4 maximum to the $5 maximum per wheel. And then there was also a piece that had an increase from the maximum four wheels to maximum 12 wheels, and they didn't really know how much that would potentially increase throughout the state because their software didn't track the number of wheels over four on registrations that had been completed in the past. The state requested that treasurer's offices start tracking the number of wheels on their registrations of their trucks, so they can develop some estimates here in this first year, and so they're working on that. They've given us an estimate just a few weeks ago that in 2014, vehicles up to eight wheels, above four wheels, but less than eight wheels, there was about 4,200 of them in Minnehaha County. And so, we're at a $4 wheel tax. If you would do the math on that, it would allow for an increase of about $21,000 annually. So, not a huge increase there, but it would allow you to tax the larger trucks and not just the four vehicle cars, or four wheel cars. An increase going from $4 per wheel to $5 per wheel would be about a 25% increase on our existing wheel tax, or it would amount to about $811,000 annually. And so, those are just some numbers to get an idea of what kind of impact this highway funding bill would have to the county wheel tax if the county commission chose to change the way that we tax our wheel tax currently. The highway department is recommending not to make any changes at this time, just because we're comfortable where we are right now with our funding levels, our staffing, the amount of projects that we're doing. The amount of funding that we saw as an increase due to this bill is allowing us to do a whole bunch of new projects already, and we're still growing into that workload and, and realizing some of the extra work that we have cut out for us. We don't see any need for adding additional right now, so we just wanted to provide this briefing for you, so you had an idea of what the wheel tax options were and what that Senate bill did for us. So, if you have any questions, I can answer them.
Are there any questions for DJ?
I have one, DJ. So, right now, we have a wheel tax on up to four wheels, so how does it affect over the road trucks? If you've got 12 to 18 wheels, you're not paying for those extra wheels at this point?
And it's just on the, the motor unit, so it's not on the trailer.
Oh, it's just on the motor unit?
Yep, and so, on your motor unit, you're taxed the four wheels, because it's maxed out at four wheels, and it would be maxed out at the $4, so $16 for one of those. Now, the license, the taxation on those types of vehicles is a little bit different because they can be taxed in multiple states, and, and it's a lot more complicated than that, but if somebody just chose to license it in Minnehaha County, it would be taxed the $16 for the wheel tax.
Okay, and how do you, do you not tax the trailers at all?
The county doesn't. I don't know if there's some taxes through the state or through the federal government, but the county does not.
Okay, thank you. Any other questions?
Is there revenue we share? I mean, those trailers with 12 wheels on them are causing damage to the-
they can be taxed in multiple states and, and it's a lot more complicated than that. But if somebody just chose to license it in Minnehaha County, it would be taxed the $16 for the wheel tax.
Okay. And how do you, do you not tax the trailers at all?
The county doesn't. I don't know if there's some taxes through the state or through the federal government, but the county does not.
Okay. Thank you. Any other questions?
Is there revenue we share? I mean, those trailers with 12 wheels on them are causing damage to the road.
Right. There's, we get a proration of wheel tax back from the state. When we collect a wheel tax, some of that will go into the state fee, and then they prorate that back out to the counties. And so we do receive a significant check from the state. I think it's quarterly as a payout of wheel tax. And so I think some of that might be from some trailer taxing, but I'm not sure exactly how their formulas work. I know that we get three to four million dollars, I think, annually from the state's wheel tax.
All right. Commissioner Bender?
DJ, do you have any idea how other counties in the state have been handling this wheel tax? Do you have any?
Some of them have been going right to the $5. Not very many. I think maybe 10, if I were to put a guess to it. Every time that somebody does, we typically receive an email just kind of as a heads up. Some of them have gone to the $5, and it seems like those counties that are going to the $5 are also going to the 12 wheels. And what's really been nice is, is through the big, the bridge improvement grants, there is a requirement for counties to have a wheel tax. It doesn't say that it needs to be maxed out, and it doesn't say a minimum, but it requires a wheel tax to qualify for the big grants. And so what some counties have done is, is use that requirement to be able to get a wheel tax, because before, a lot of them would, would pass a wheel tax on their commission level, and then it would be referred, and they would not pass it through a vote. And so they would lose out on their wheel tax. And so being able to educate the communities and say that they need to have a wheel tax in order to qualify for the bigs, then they're allowed to get it through the county commission without it being referred.
Okay. Thank you.
And that's happened probably four or five times since April.
So is your, your recommendation to leave the $4 but to go to eight wheels?
My recommendation is, is if you're asking probably just to do nothing, there would be no tax increase. If, I provided the numbers if you did choose to go from four to 12 with the information that we have, which would be an estimate of the four through eight range, and it's only an increase of, I think, $21,000. And, and so that would not make a significant impact to our budget. Not a significant impact enough for us to recommend increasing the tax any of them.
Those UPS trucks and those FedEx trucks that are running around with, what, six?
A lot of them would have six, but I don't know that they are being registered in Minnehaha County yet.
Oh, really?
They're probably not.
That's interesting. Where would they be registered? They gotta be registered in South Dakota.
I think interstate registration.
Commissioner Burr?
So I guess I just want to say I concur with the highway department's recommendation, and we certainly are blessed with having the best road system of any county in South Dakota. And oftentimes, I know people in the rural area feel that it's kind of bad that we're so Sioux Falls centric in this county, but because of the large number of vehicles we have in the city, we have the money with our existing wheel tax to make improvements on our roads throughout the county. And with the legislature's recent action, as we all saw last, last week, you know, there's been a spike in our highway monies available for bridges and for roads. And thank goodness, we don't need to raise taxes.
That's right. I agree.
I think the biggest impact that we would, that people would have if we did go from four wheels to eight wheels or 12 wheels would be like a farmer that is choosing to license his equipment year round and not just doing the seasonal license year.
Okay. Thank you, DJ.
Thank you. It was just a briefing. We'll go on to item number 14. It's consider a motion to approve a change order number one, the amount of $3,700 to the contract with Pram Construction for the project MC, number MC 122BR-15, reconstruction of the bridge 50-243-100 on Highway 122, one-fourth mile east of Highway 121.
Commissioners, during the removals of the existing structure, when they were removing the abutments on each end of the bridge, one end had an existing abutment structure that was discovered that was unknown. And so they did remove that, that concrete and piling. And so the time that it took for them to remove it, we negotiated a contract change order price of $3,700, a pretty minimal amount compared to some of these that we've seen in the past. And, and we're requesting your approval. They also negotiated a one-day extension to their contract time period.
Make a motion to approve.
Second. Your motion is second. Any questions? All those in favor say aye. Aye. Those opposed, same sign. Motion passes unanimously. Thank you.
Thank you.
Item number 15 is consider a resolution to set effective date for a minor boundary change between Sioux Falls School District number 49-5 and the West Central School District number 49-7. Robert Wilson, good morning.
Good morning, Commissioners. Robert Wilson in the commission office. Commission office has received a request from both the Sioux Falls School District and the West Central School District to set by resolution an effective date for a minor school district boundary, boundary change between the two districts. The request for the effective date of this is July 1st of this year. The area included in this is, and the boundary change is commonly referred to as the Cherry Lake Reserve area, and we have provided for your review the legal descriptions of all properties that actually would be included in this request. State statute requires that upon the receipt of a request or resolution from both of the involved school boards, that the county commission has jurisdiction over this and at, and its next regular meeting shall set an order determining the effective date of this minor boundary change. The resolution, this resolution follows actions by both districts to execute a tax sharing agreement, revenue agreement for the Cherry Lake Reserve addition, as well as follow-up resolutions by both districts to clarify the legal descriptions of the properties to be annexed. Bringing that forward for your, your consideration, any questions you have, but that is the, the request from both school districts for minor boundary change effective as of July 1st of this year.
Are there any questions for Robert? According to state statute, we shall do this. I make a motion to approve.
Second.
My motion is second. All those in favor say aye. Aye. Those opposed, same sign. Motion passes unanimously.
Item number 16 is consider a motion to accept proposals and authorize chairman to sign contract with AVI Systems for communication meeting room audio and video upgrades in the amount of $48,788.
Commissioners, in recent months, it's been increasingly difficult for the commission office to maintain the audio and video system that we currently use here in the commission meeting room, to the point that we have, in some cases, just not been able to find replacement parts when, when individual items go out. We used to have a working microphone in front of the commission recorder, and when that one failed, we simply were not able to find a replacement for it. This, this equipment was purchased in 1998, and it is, it is tired. In addition to just the, the age and our issues that we're dealing with, this also has a direct, direct effect on our, our local government partners at the city of Sioux Falls and the City Link. As you know, we broadcast our commission meetings live, and then they are also rebroadcast several times through the week as well. And our analog system is not directly compatible with the HD system that they, that they use. And in, in researching this, I was, have become aware that some of the technicians and the support contractors that they use have, have gone to some pretty extensive lengths to make our system, continue to make our system compatible with the, the system that we do broadcast onto at, at City Link. Based on this, the commission office looked for, solicited a couple of proposals, two proposals to upgrade the system from, from vendors who do have a familiarity with our system. One is the, the vendor that services the City Link audio and video systems, as well as their transmission systems, and would have a, a great working knowledge of the things that we would need and the requirements for a compatibility between the two systems and to make a real seamless flow of information and a transition from the signal and the, from, from our, our point over to, to City Link. And then the second vendor we approached is one that has recently installed and maintained an ADA compliant hearing system that we, that we, that we use here in the commission meeting room. Both those vendors did submit proposals. Both, both proposals have been reviewed by both our, our office as well as City Link staff and their technicians who help us maintain this system as well as possible. And the commission office is recommending the system, the proposal by AVI Systems Incorporated. And that, the cost during that, that project or that proposal would be $48,788. That is more expensive than the alternative proposal. And the, the comment from City Link technicians as they reviewed that was that, that is the system that provides the full functionality of what we are looking for here. That if we are, if you are going to consider the, the alternative proposal at a lower cost, that there would be an additional, a number of additional à la carte pieces of equipment that would need, would need to be purchased as well to, to make the system fully functional as we, as we are looking for. And I, and I can tell you, these proposals are not, these do not have all of the bells and whistles on that, that you could look for in, in some of these systems. You can go pretty advanced on some of these. And this, we, our goal in, in doing this from the beginning really was simply to replace what we've got. Where, you know, this would be standalone microphones in front of your, your desks. This microphone would, would stay the same. It would be HD cameras and, and equipment, but essentially the functionality would be the exact same thing as what you have right now. Now, the building fund for 2015 does include $5,000 for commission meeting room upgrades, and then the provisional budget for 2016 also includes $45,000. I can tell you also that Ken McFarland, working in his, his part-time capacity, continuing to assist with the preparation of the 2016 budget, has advised that he is, he believes and is very comfortable that this could be paid out of existing funds in the 2015 building fund, building fund budget. And it is, based on this, it is our recommendation to accept the proposal from AVI for the upgraded audio and video equipment. And I would stand by for any questions.
Any questions for Robert?
Commissioner Heiberg, I guess I have a question and a comment. The, just to clarify, what we're getting is, is more a upgrade of the 15-year-old system that we have, and it's not necessarily, we're not trying to match exactly what the city of Sioux Falls has. We're not going to that level of sophistication. You know, in my short time here at the county, there's lots of issues like this that seem to come up where, you know, frankly, budget is tight. I think this is an expense that has been brought up fairly repeatedly. And I know that Mr. McFarland was a strong proponent of this. And it's a question, a lot of times, of what kind of service do county taxpayers want? I'm constantly surprised how many people I meet that watch these broadcasts and that use this as, as a source of information for what is going on. And I think we owe it. I think those taxpayers expect to be able to understand what we're saying here and to be able to have some visual that they can actually discern who the people are that are speaking. And I don't like to spend money any more than anybody else. I particularly, you know, to have, you know, would rather spend money that is a direct service to somebody, but I think that many people feel this is a direct service to them. And so I would be a strong proponent of doing this.
Additional comments?
I think over the years, we've had quite a few complaints because it is difficult to hear with this old system that people, when they watch it, say, you know, I can't hear what you guys are saying. So I guess, and I have been resistant in the years past, but we've gotten to the point that we really don't have a choice. We're losing microphones, and pretty soon they won't be able to hear any of us.
The only thing that I would add to Commissioner Bender's comments is, is you're right. We are, this is a very basic system that, that does, does without a lot of those additional features that some other systems include. But it also, it, it's modern to the point that if there are additional features in the future that you decide would be beneficial, would be helpful, we're, we're in a position that we could add those on in, at, at a future time if that was your decision.
Okay.
Senator, I'll make a motion to approve, and if there's a second, I'll make a comment then.
Is there a motion? Second?
Second.
Commissioner Burr?
Not many of us have a computer from 1998 or a television or a phone. We might have a car, but we've got it in the garage waiting for antique plates to become qualified. So this is well overdue, and let's vote for it.
Okay. I have a motion and a second to approve the contract with AVI Systems for audio and video upgrades in the commission room. All those in favor say aye. Aye. Those opposed, same sign. Motion passes unanimously. Item number 17 is consider a bid award for the WH Lions Fairground Facilities exterior repairs. The bids were opened on August 5th, 2015. Robert Wilson.
And this goes back to hail damage from a storm on July, June 16th, 2014. We originally had a, a bid opening on June 24th for repair work, and there were no bids received. After some additional checking and, and then reaching out to some, some vendors that were identified, we opened it up again for, for bids, and bids were ultimately opened on August 5th. We had two bidders. The low bid was Wildcat Roofing out of Nebraska with, at a bid amount of $139,527. This is below the insurers, insurers' estimate of $158,441, and we are recommending acceptance of the bid submitted by Wildcat Roofing at a cost of $139,527.
Any questions for Robert? Commissioner Burr?
I just have a question perhaps for Cindy here. Did the other, Beckenhofer, did they provide a bid bond?
Yes.
Okay, I just see an X there, and I was wondering. And if I may, my only other question, are we confident that this company is able to perform this contract?
We, we've checked with our, our architect, who helped write the bid, bid specs on this, and, and they are, they are aware of this vendor. They have no concerns.
Thank you.
Okay. Is there a motion?
No, I'm saying, of course.
Is there a motion?
Make a motion to approve.
Second.
Motion in a second. All those in favor say aye. Aye. Those opposed, same sign. Motion passes unanimously. Item number 18 is consider a motion to determine the method of sales for the county-owned property RDI 14086 and 14088, located within the city of Corson, South Dakota. Minnehaha County. Robert Wilson.
And, and back in March of this year, commission office approached you to make you aware of some interest that the commission office had received in a number of properties owned by the county up in the Corson area. These properties were originally obtained by the county to accommodate a widening of South Dakota Highway 11 and 482nd Avenue in Corson. The properties are RDID 14086 and 14088. Try to show this as, as these two properties right, right there and right there. And based on that initial level of interest, resolution was approved in April to declare the two properties as surplus properties and authorize an appraisal. County appraisal board reviewed the properties and submitted a report. And the appraised value was, for each property was $6,115 for RDID 14086 and $2,865 for RDID 14088. At that time, it was determined that a method of sale would be considered at a later date. And you have, that's what we're bringing forward for your consideration today. Per state statute, you have three options if you were to consider a method of sale. And one is sale by sealed bid, another is sale by public auction, and then the third option is to consider sale by enlisting a broker to, to list the properties. So that is what we bring to you today is a consideration of a So, that is what we bring to you today is a consideration of an option to sell these properties and look for your feedback.
Comments?
Question?
Question. Commissioner Kelly?
Well, I would just, a comment on the auction. I don't think we've got enough value there to justify an auction, the cost, because you gotta advertise it, you gotta pay the upfront expenses. So, I think we're probably, most logically, down to either sealed bid or listing with broker.
Commissioner Burr, did you have a comment?
Well, I was gonna ask the auditor or the guy with the short gray hair if, what his preferred plan would be.
I would think we'd have to, we'd have to advertise regardless what we do. So, the advertising is already gonna be there, but...
Thanks, Commissioner. Bob Litzman, the auditor's office. I just wanted you to know that probably the third week in September, we are going to have our annual tax deed auction sale down in the mezzanine of this building. So, if you wanted to put that on there, we'd be happy to accommodate you.
So, the cost wouldn't be a factor then?
No, sir.
I think that would be the best way to do it. It's, it will be noticed then because that'll go out with notice of all other properties that are available.
Yes.
And it would be auctioned.
I'll make that motion to do that unless maybe someone with more experience in real estate has a thought.
I have a motion and a second to approve an auction would go on, I don't know which auction you called it. Tax deed auction. Oh, okay.
Have we declared these as surplus yet?
We have.
We have done that already? Okay. All right, I just wanted to make sure. Okay, thank you.
I have a motion and a second to put this on the tax deed auction. All those in favor say aye. Aye. Those opposed, same sign. Motion passes unanimously. Item number 19 is liaison reports. Are there any liaison reports? I did meet with the Public Defender's Office this morning for a brief meeting and the Gideon's position that we approved has started this week. And then, also, they were asking, again, they came forward about a year ago and asked for incentives for Drug Court and did receive some from the public. So, I'm just putting it out there again, if anyone wants to contribute to incentives to Drug Court. When people make their steps in the program, they are awarded by getting to draw something out of the jar. And they might be a McDonald's gift certificate or something. There were small things or it might be a coffee drink or something. But anyway, there were quite a few, I think, given last time. And so, I just said I'd bring it forward again that we are looking for donations to that cause. So, no other liaison reports? Is there any new business? Is there any old business? I'm just gonna bring up a little old business. Did you have something, Commissioner Kelly?
No.
Oh, okay.
I was getting ready to...
You were getting ready to make a motion to quit. Just, Commissioner Bender and I had talked just briefly a few weeks ago about the convention that we had gone to in North Carolina and really hadn't had a chance to talk about it at that point. And so, we did sit down this last week and visit a little bit about what we had done at the convention. And so, just wanted to share just a couple more minutes of what we did. I think major, that one of their major goals or initiatives at that convention was to talk about the stepping up initiative, which we have talked about at our joint meeting with the city and also talked about here the last time that Jean and I talked about convention. And I would like to see if there's interest to put that on the agenda to approve the stepping up initiative. I think we're already starting to make some of those moves towards that. And I think the sheriff would be agreeable to continue to work towards the stepping up initiative. And so, with your nod of approval, I would put that on a future agenda to just approve that resolution. There's information and webinars and technical support online to continue to work through the stepping up program. So, and then, the other one, I attended quite a few, there was a lot of different seminars, but I attended quite a few different ones on the Criminal Justice Coordinated Council. There's a lot of different councils out there that work with jail reform and that's what this particular council did. They had several different counties that use this CJCC in their work. And so, I attended quite a few of their different seminars and was very excited about what they have. Some of them will give you technical support if you go the direction of what their reforms are. I've talked to the sheriff and they, we are doing quite a few different reforms. We continue to work on that as we're looking forward or projecting forward to building a new jail to replace our corrections center. They just talk about, you know, putting together councils and having standing meetings and task force groups and experience and having technical support. Some of that stuff we already have in place and we will continue to add volunteers or staff as needed to those different avenues. It was very interesting. It's definitely the way that the nation, I think, is going is with jail reform. And I think that we are right on the edge of working towards some of those things. Do you have anything else, Jean?
Commissioner Heiberg, I just add a couple of comments. We did try to divide and conquer, so we didn't try to overlap too much on the different sessions that we went to. But I attended some different sessions on the stepping up initiative and I've heard and I've been interested in reading different stories that have been in the Wall Street Journal recently. There's a lot of interest at the federal level as well. I think everyone is recognizing that there's a lot of mental health issues that are being dealt with, probably inappropriately through the criminal justice system. It's not what criminal justice folks are trained in dealing with and it's not really providing services to help keep those people, get them healthy and keep them out of the criminal justice system. So, I was very interested in those and think that that's definitely something that we would want to be involved in. And then, just to step, kind of piggyback on what you said about the coordinated council, we heard some very impressive presentations where these groups have gotten together. It's just like anything, when you want to accomplish something, you need to get all the people at the table that influence the process. And I heard some very impressive presentations from a couple of judges down in the Charlotte area who have been, you know, part of this process, skeptical at first, but were able to really see the value of being part of the process and utilizing some of the tools that can be available to help judges in the process of deciding where's the appropriate level for somebody who's coming through the system and whether they need to be in jail or can be released and have seen some very impressive results as a result of that. But it's just a matter of getting a lot of very busy people to take time to sit down and discuss and identify issues and work towards solutions.
On the mental illness side, I was at one presentation where they talked, a county has put together a building similar to our safe home, but it deals with mental illness people specifically. And they have had good results with that, keeping them out of jail, keeping them out of the hospital and keeping them housed. And I thought that was very interesting because it was basically the same kind of setup we have, a safe home for our alcoholic people.
Where was that?
I didn't write the county down. I think it was, I think it was in North Carolina. I just wrote down the name of the program, so I'd have to do a little research to figure out which county it was in. But that was the same kind of issue. So, is there any other old business? Okay, with that, I guess we'll go to executive session for personnel and possibly contract.
What's my motion?
Second. Motion and a second. All those in favor say aye. Aye. Those opposed, same sign. Motion passes unanimously. We are adjourned.